Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council from Monday, May 4th, 2015. I ask that you please rise for brief invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Tonight, as the city council meets in our regular session, we just ask for guidance and direction and vision as we undertake to act on the various matters of business before us. We are ever mindful that as a growing and hopefully successfully developing community that we are constantly faced with new challenges and ideas, and we are always hopefully of a mindset that we want to work through all the processes and find what is the very best courses of action. So, tonight, we just ask for guidance as we discuss the issues before us, knowing that each and every member of the council is here to do the very best they can in their heart and mind. Tonight also, we want to remember those from our community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America. We just ask that a special blessing be showered upon them as they go about their honorable duties of defending the liberties of our country throughout this world. Also, tonight, we want to remember those from our community who are sick or infirmed, and ask that a special blessing be showered on each and every one of them, and that they feel better and stronger and healthier in the days ahead. We ask for all these blessings, knowing that we are here to do the very best that we can. Amen.
Alderman Stark, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
Ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Brown.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Atack.
Here.
Stark.
Here.
Chantet.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Fisher.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Callahan.
Here.
Homan.
Here.
Sam.
Here.
Bottomman.
Here.
Serone.
Here.
McFadden.
Here.
The record reflects that all fourteen elected members of the city council are present and accounted for this evening's meeting, so we obviously have the necessary quorum to conduct business. Moving then to item number four, items to be removed, added, or changed on the agenda. Alderman Stark, do you have anything this evening?
I don't.
Okay. Moving then to item number five, which is presentation of the consent agenda. Alderman Stark, would you read this, please?
I will. The consent agenda reads as follows: We accept and place on file the Committee of the Whole minutes for March 3rd and March 24th and March 31st, 2015, and the following approvals: April 24th, 2015, payroll in the amount of $735,849.81; the accounts payable check register in the amount of $687,702.10; Resolution 15-58-R authorizing professional services contract with Tesca Associates, Inc., to complete West Town TIF plan project; Ordinance 15-19 declaring surplus property; Resolution 15-59-R requesting permit from IDOT foreclosure of roadway for 2015 farmers market special event; Resolution 1556-R authorization to purchase a self-contained leaf trailer from RNOW in the amount of $61,721. I move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Move Alderman Stark, second vote from Chantet, for the approval of the consent agenda as read. Any discussion? Court call the roll.
Stark.
Aye.
Chantet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Homan.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Bottomman.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Homan.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Bottomman.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved, fourteen yes, no, no's, none absent. Okay, moving to item number six on our agenda, which is a public hearing scheduled for 7:30. Reference the annexation of the city electrical substation property at 19 Hubbard Avenue. I'm convening the public hearing. Mr. Buneen, are you here? Did you want to make some comments about this?
Sorry, the microphone wasn't working. This is the annexation of the city substation property that is located partially on Fermilab property off of Hubbard Avenue. This would bring one of the city facilities that is actually on Fermilab property into the city limits, so this tonight is the public hearing for that annexation, as well as later on in the agenda, the actual ordinance annexing the property into the city limits.
All right. Does anybody on the council have any questions about this? Alderman Brown?
I don't have any questions, Your Honor, but I just want to make mention that this was something that was negotiated with Fermilab back when we did the electrical improvements on the east side of town, and being the good neighbor that they are, they worked with us on this, and therefore, that's why we have the substation located on their property.
Any other comments or questions? Does anybody in the audience wish to address the subject of the annexation of the electrical substation on Hubbard Avenue? All right, Alderman Brown, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
I move to adjourn the public hearing.
Second.
Motion, Alderman Brown, second vote from McFadden. Court, take call and roll, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chantet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Homan.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Bottomman.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn the public hearing on the electrical substations approved, fourteen yes, no, no's, none absent. Okay, moving to item number seven, matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda. Do we have anybody in the audience that wishes to address this for something that's not on the agenda? Okay. All right, moving to item number eight, is the Batavia Chamber of Commerce's turn this meeting to give us a presentation, so Holly Dykman's here. Welcome, Holly.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one announcement I would like to make to all of you this evening that you should know about, because we blast you all this information via email, but we have our Putz and Pig Annual Golf Outing coming up this year. We're changing it up a little bit to offer a pig roast along with our golf outing to encourage members of the public or those that cannot golf, or choose not to golf, to join us this evening on June 1st at Eagle Brook Country Club. So, we have, we've also changed it up a little bit for our raffle. We're going to be selling raffle tickets for five major prizes. One of them includes rent for a year for a business space in our offices over at the old post office building. So, if you know anybody that's interested in opening or expanding their office or business from maybe a home office, or expansion of their current facilities, please encourage them to purchase one ticket, which could then ultimately end up in them having rent for a year. So, thank you to Batavia Enterprises for donating that to us, but we've reached out to many of our members to donate, and we've put together five pretty amazing prizes from a family fun pack and night out in the town, those types of things, so. But again, I have some information that I'll pass out, one to each of you. Our golf outing again is Monday, June 1st at Eagle Brook Country Club. Registration at 11:00, our shotgun start is at 1:00. I would like to turn over the microphone to one of the newest members of the Batavia Chamber of Commerce. Her name is Susan Worline. She is the president, CEO, and founder of Flying for Hope, so she's here to share with you a little bit about what they do at Flying for Hope. Susan? Good evening, everyone. Is everyone awake? My name is Susan Worline, and Flying for Hope is a non-for-profit organization that I started in August of 2012, and what we do is we actually arrange transportation for individuals or families in crisis with flights, hotel stays, car rentals, bus or train tickets. Example this week is I actually flew out a lady from Boise, Idaho to St. Louis because her grandmother is dying, and she would like to say goodbye to her grandmother, but she couldn't afford the ticket. So, we arranged the transportation. I don't personally fly them there, but I arrange the transportation for them and get them to their loved one immediately. We do things such as car accidents, you know, end-of-life care. I also work full-time hospice as well, so funerals. It could be a natural disaster. We've helped out with even the tornado that was just recently, had to get someone from Wisconsin to their loved one here in Illinois. So, we do things local as well. We rely completely on donations, frequent flyer miles, credit card points, and also through a website called shop.com/flyingforhope, and that's just purchases that people can make. If they don't want to do a cash donation, they actually make a purchase, they need to buy something at Sports Authority or, you know, Walmart. A small percentage of that goes to our organization. So, we are a completely non-for-profit, been in business almost three years, like I said, and check us out, we're making a difference. We just flew our fifteenth person this past week, so we're hoping to do that double next year. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any questions of?
Susan?
Yeah, my website is flyingforhope.com, and it's with the number four, and we also
have a Facebook page, so if all of you are on Facebook, you could like my page, that would be wonderful. We also do, just to let you know, we do a background check on all of our clients, because we are not going to fly everyone to Vegas. I've had a couple of those. So, we do a thorough background check that I got from a couple of my police officer friends that helped me get through that part of it, because we've had some people try to take advantage, and I'm not going to take advantage of people who are donating their money or their frequent flyer miles, it's just not the right thing to do. So, we do a thorough background check, they fill out a financial aid application, they do have to send some documentation, such as a bank statement, their W-2s, that is all. Just like hospice, I do it like HIPAA, you know, all of that is very private, and then our board approves, they can do it in 24 hours. We've done a flight in less than four hours. So, if there's a need and there's a crisis, and if a loved one needs to get to their family member, we get them there.
Another way we could describe the communications here, I think, is given that you're here with the, tonight, as the guest of the Chamber of Commerce, that you obviously have a relationship with them, so if somebody needed to get ahold of you or talk to you directly, probably call the Chamber and they would be?
Yeah, and I also brought some information, some articles, Mayor, and my business card, just so if you have any information. And honestly, it doesn't have to be, it can be something local, too. I've had one where Bree of Geneva, I'm not sure if you've heard of Bree of Geneva, it's a nursing home, and someone had fallen out of bed and broke her hip, but the power of attorney lived way north in Wisconsin, about three, four hours away, and cannot drive because the son was blind, his mother is in her 90s, but he needed to get down to Geneva, to Delnor Hospital, to make, you know, he's the power of attorney, to make a medical decision. Well, he didn't have a car, he didn't get out, so I had a car go pick him up, just called someone local in Wisconsin. So, and then I put him up at the Fairfield Inn and Suites in St. Charles, so he could have a place to stay and a meal to eat, so. Yeah, so that's the things that we do. And yeah, you can go to our website anytime, I have my business cards with me. I live, of course, in Batavia. I live right behind the Walmart, so you can find me, because I work out of my home. So, anytime we can help any of your, if you have any relatives or you know anybody, we just, we're trying to spread the word as much as we can, and it's working. This past week, I was on Steve Harvey, and I'll be on the Today Show in about a month, so things are really starting to take off, no pun intended, but I completely rely on donations. I still work for a living, two, full-time, two jobs, but it's worth it to me, because not only can I help people in hospice, I can help people with our organization get to their loved one in a crisis.
Certainly, let me say on behalf of the community that we're honored and pleased and, you know, certainly commend what you are doing with Flying for Hope, and it certainly sounds like a most worthwhile organization that's here to help people when they're really down and out and ready to step forward and bolster some people in moments of great crisis, so.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you for your ingenuity and your wisdom and your compassion and your interest and your love of mankind that is helping to give Batavia one more shining star, so appreciate very much all you're doing.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Thank you for taking the time to listen, and I hope you enjoy the rest of your board meetings. Thank you very much.
Item number nine is, we're going to have an award from the Batavia Environmental Commission. Carolyn, or Brian, are you going to do it?
First of all, you got to excuse me, I've had a cold thing going for a week, so. Just in case people aren't aware, the City of Batavia Environmental Commission has a green certification program. The purpose of the program is to provide both kind of an outline and endorsement of those Batavia businesses that wish to become more environmentally sensitive, and while at the same time reducing their operational costs. Anyhow, we have VWR with us tonight, who has worked for many, many years to gain what is the Environmental Commission's highest award, the Platinum Award. This is really significant, because this is by far the largest company or business in Batavia to ever achieve this award, so you can only imagine, the larger the company, the more difficult this award is to achieve. I've made some notes of some of their very, very significant sustainable achievements, and I'll just read off the list here. They have incorporated an energy efficiency lighting retrofit, which resulted in a 49% reduction in overall average draw for their entire lighting system, and this is all about their Batavia facility, not their global facilities. Their facility is now 100% landfill-free. They recycle and waste to energy, by recycling and waste-to-energy conversion practices. They average just over 32 tons monthly for recycling and waste-to-energy materials. They've also installed low-flow water fixtures, energy-efficient window treatments, green seal consumable products, along with the installation of HVLS fans, which I had to look that up, I had no idea, they're smart fans for their distribution center. Along with that, their global company is achieving sustainable practices, too, and they're working with their suppliers and customers, and trying to achieve mutual sustainability practices and objectives, so. With that, I'll turn it over to the mayor. Again, I'd like to congratulate VWR, thank you for all you do for, you know, our environment, so.
How many members of the environmental?
We have.
Carolyn, I know.
Carolyn, Ron.
Why don't you guys come on up? And why don't we have VWR come up? I got to get you over here, though, so I get you on the TV camera. want to express my commendation to VWR International for what you are doing here in our community, and kind of setting the standard and the record and the example for our community. And VWR International has been in a business of tenure for a number of years, and they've been kind of a quiet guardian and partner for this community in jobs and other things that you've done, kind of quietly, to make Batavia a nice place for us all to live. And you certainly have a far reach. I know I've talked to people in other parts of the country, tell me they order things from Batavia, Illinois, from VWR, so you are a company that certainly does a lot of good things, and certainly your work in the whole environmental world is one that we are very proud of, and so it was with great pleasure that I present to you the Platinum Award from the Batavia Environmental Commission, that says, "A green business is a smart business, and a real smart business runs a successful operation while protecting the environment which sustains our economy." Presented to VWR International, April, we say April 20th, 2015, I didn't make that meeting, so we got you here tonight, but we are very pleased that you are here, and we hope that you continue to be our corporate citizens, maybe for generations to come, and as you continue to kind of set the standard and example for others of your neighbors to follow, as we all kind of work with the Batavia Environmental Commission, trying to strengthen and improve our environment, not only Batavia, but throughout the entire country. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. [applause] This was a four-year fight, if you want to call it, to achieve this status, working a lot with Byron. We've, I think we achieved the lower-end status approximately four, five years ago with the help of my colleagues and coworkers. It's been a great, great journey. I can't tell you how proud we are to have achieved this. Shows the dedication of a lot of good people for a great company. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, moving right along, going to item number 10, which is appointments. I believe you've all gotten a memo from me that we are in need of appointing Ralph Beck to be a member of the Batavia Police Pension Board, and Ralph has provided that duty for some years and has a lot of experience in the whole arena, and certainly, most of you know Ralph served for a number of years as our city attorney, so he comes with a broad background. And also, I need to have a reappointment of Nancy Vance to the Batavia Board of Fire and Police Commissioners, and she's currently serving as chairman of that body, and as all, most of you know, she was a very active member of the Batavia City Council for eight years, representing the 7th Ward, and was somebody that certainly has her heart in the right spot when it comes to Batavia. So, I'd ask for a motion of confirmation for both of Ralph Beck and Nancy Vance to those two positions.
So moved.
Move Atack, second vote from Alderman Brown. Court call the roll, please.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chantet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Homan.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Bottomman.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye. Motion's approved, fourteen yes, no, no's, none absent. Thank you very much for that photo confidence in those two individuals. Moving then to item number 14, which is Resolution 15-51-R authorizing execution of a downtown grant agreement with the Batavia Library District. Alderman Brown, do you have anything to say on that?
No, this would come out of government services, Your Honor.
Oh, sorry. Alderman Stark?
I, this came before the Joint Committee of the Whole last week. The vote by the Committee of the Whole was to turn down the grant agreement for $100,000 out of TIF money. It was defeated by one vote, however, not every Alderman was present, so I, I think that we have all discussed this quite a bit, and I guess all that's left to do is take a final vote. So, I make a motion that we approve Resolution 15-51-R authorizing execution of a downtown grant agreement with the Batavia Library District.
Second concurs.
I concur.
So, we don't take a vote, then, because that has been withdrawn. I'd just like to say a few things. I will tell you that of all the institutions that we have in this community that have worked really hard the last few years to be a key player in Batavia, certainly, you know, I don't want to point one over another, but I will just tell you, the library's been about as good a giver and supporter and worker with us as you can get, and they have shown on a number of occasions in a variety of fronts, in a variety of activities that have been put forth when something needed to get done, or there's some support needed to be had, the Batavia Library was always right there at the front of the pack, willing to step forward. So, I regret that this whole thing kind of came down the way it did. I think that we certainly, probably, as a council, and specifically at our committee meetings, we probably should have talked this thing through to a greater degree than obviously was the case, and for that, I apologize to the Batavia Library, because I think that it was not portrayed in the best light for them, and I don't think, that certainly was not my intention, because I have nothing but the highest respect for the library. And given the fact that, as I tell a number of people, they have become one of the key anchor tenants in downtown Batavia, as ones that not only serve our community on a day-by-day, almost moment-by-moment basis, with nothing but good things, but they bring probably almost 1,000 people a day into our downtown area, and really kind of spike the economy, and you think of all those people coming down here, that then probably stop at some other store, or some other business, or some other activity in the downtown area to do something. I know a lot of other, I get the chance, as you know, I run some other positions in the region, and I get to talk to a lot of other mayors, and when some of them come out to Batavia, and I give them a tour, the big ooh and ah we get to is when I get to the top of the hill, and we look at the Batavia Public Library, about what a great institution that is. And you don't have to go very far from our community to see and hear some other towns that are in great envy right now about trying to imitate, or replicate, or follow the lead of the Batavia Public Library in things that they are doing. So, you know, we've got something here that we really need to be proud of, and I just wanted tonight to take my hat off and commend the Batavia Public Library for their innovative ideas, and Doug Sullivan, who, in my opinion, is certainly a rising star in Batavia, is somebody that really wants to, you know, be part of the community, and he's serving as president of the Library Board. Doug has been communicating with me regularly the last couple of days, trying to figure out what was the best course of action for them to go about, to do something that would, you know, kind of keep this whole thing in the right context, in the right order, and after we've discussed it, I think he's of the opinion that maybe there's going to be some other activities in the near term, that the library and the city maybe can help participate in a greater scheme of things, and there's some work on some other stuff that needs to be done around the area. So, I'm very optimistic that we can continue to partner and work with a good working relationship with the Batavia Public Library, because they are certainly ones that have done nothing to, you know, tarnish their image, or do anything to be a fighter or an againer in this town. They have been a very positive energy source in Batavia in the last few years, and I certainly want to do all I can as the mayor to keep that at the forefront of what this is all about. So, I know we've got a number of members of the Library Board out in the audience, we've got the executive director, Mr. Sheets is here. And I, guys, I just want to say thank you to you on behalf of the community for all that you've done the last few years to really give us a starship in libraries for the region as to how to do it, and now we have all these other people showing up here, wanting to kind of follow in the lead of the Batavia Public Library. So, as far as I'm concerned, we're here to continue to work with you, and next time, we'll get this thing down and have some much stronger conversation, and I've heard from some of those on the council who said that they didn't vote for it the last time, but they still want to partner with you, so I got to believe the chemistry and the energy and the outlook of the council is here to do that with us in the days ahead, so don't be afraid, don't be a stranger, come back and see us. We've started this, having a meeting with you at least once a year, so I've already written it on my calendar in next March, to call George and Doug and see if we can set up a meeting of just bring, come down and have a conversation. In the meantime, if some great thing happens, don't hesitate to call, because we certainly want to continue the relationship, and hopefully, this won't spoil, and we'll be continuing to do good things with the library in the days ahead. Thank you for being very special to this community, and for all that you do to make Batavia a very friendly and intellectually superior and technologically advanced place, because you do all that, and you do it so well, so thank you. Moving forth then to item number 12, which is Ordinance 15-18, annexing the city electrical substation at 19 Hubbard Avenue. Alderman Brown?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is what we had the public hearing on at 7:30. I don't really need to say too much more. It's a little bit over 29 acres that we're going to be annexing, and again, it was because of the cooperation between the City of Batavia and Fermilab that we were able to make that whole electrical improvement out in that area, and locate a substation there that would take care of the entire. there that would take care of the entire city, basically. So with no further ado, I move for approval of Ordinance fifteen dash eighteen, annexing the city electric substation at nineteen hundred Hubbard Avenue.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Wolf for the approval of Ordinance fifteen dash eighteen, annexing the electrical substation at nineteen hundred Hubbard Avenue. Any discussion? Kirk, please call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Atech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Bodderman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Ordinance fifteen dash eighteen is approved. Fourteen yes, no, no's, none absent. Okay, moving to thirteen, which is approval of a Class F liquor license and waive the fee for the Water Street Studios gallery opening on May sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen. Who's got this one?
Oh, that would be me. Water Street Studios is having a gallery opening on May sixteenth, Saturday, May sixteenth, from five to eight p.m. They have applied for a liquor license for that evening. They have, all background checks have been completed, they're totally in compliance. So they have asked us to waive the fee for this event, for the liquor license. And so I make a motion that we approve a Class F liquor license and waive fee for Water Street Studios gallery opening on May sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Stark, second by Alderman Clark for the approval of the Class F liquor license and waiving the fee for Water Street Studios gallery opening on May sixteenth. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll, please.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Bodderman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Atech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Bodderman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Atech?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Fourteen yes, no, no's, none absent. Okay, moving to item number fourteen, which is approval of Batavia Avenue crosswalk at Houston. Alderman Wolf?
Thank you, Your Honor. Background on this goes back to several weeks ago, we had a business owner come in and talk to us about what he had found out on the crosswalk at thirty-one in Houston. At this point, the recommendation from the COW would be that we not proceed with the island out in the middle of Route thirty-one. So at this point, I think we'll open it up for discussion for anybody that was not at the meeting or has any further questions.
I wasn't at.
Alderman Atech wanted to.
Yeah, I wasn't at the meeting. I think that we have new information from last week's meeting, and I, I kind of feel that we may have rushed the decision because we thought it was an all-or-nothing situation, that we either approve this crosswalk as it is, or we didn't have a crosswalk. Well, I think we found out that it would be possible to go back for redesign, and it was our designer that designed it, not IDOT's designer or something like that. So I think there are various options that we can consider, and I hope that we could delay this and maybe get all the stakeholders together, get the business owner, get the Bike Commission, because this kind of came out, out of nowhere. And, you know, the business owners didn't have much time to figure out what was going on. The Bike Commission was totally taken by surprise, and they have worked on this for four years. And it's a really key crossing to bring the bikers directly to the bike path and to the pedestrian bridge, and the bike bridge, you know, and it fulfills a lot of the goals of our strategic plan. So, you know, I hope we could just, I know time is of the essence here, but I hope we can take a moment and look to staff to present us with some more alternatives. I think, you know, we saw Gary's memo, he might be able to make a few more comments tonight, and kind of come up with a timeline, and then, you know, get more information, and then make a decision.
Clark?
Yeah, I, I know this has been discussed, you know, when we talked at the last meeting back two thousand and twelve, but I guess after that meeting, I just felt very unsettled by the fact that our Bike Commission has spent so much time. We have these residents who volunteer their time and make these plans, and then we completely threw their plan out the window. I, it just gives, it makes it hard for them to want to do things when they get into that type of situation. I just felt bad for the members of the Commission. So I do like Lucy's idea, but I'm not, I'm not sure of staff's timeline, but if that's possible, because I, we want our residents to feel that they're making a difference when they take their time to be on a committee, and, and I just felt bad that how it went down in the last meeting. Thank you.
Alderman Stark?
I was not at the COW, I was at the city, or I called into the City Council meeting when it was proposed that we were moving forward, and when Mr. Oki talked about the impact to his business, I think there has been a lack of communication in that I would say that I've not heard anything about this intersection since it was first proposed in two thousand and twelve, and there have been a lot of new members who have joined the Council. I never saw any final drawings, I never knew construction was even starting. So if it was a surprise to me, it would have been even a bigger surprise to someone who's a business owner and a stakeholder in this. So I would propose that we take this back to the COW and have a more flushed-out discussion about this so we can all become more in agreement, because I would hate to see this go down in flames tonight versus if there's a good compromise that we all work towards it.
Gary, did you want to make some comments?
Your Honor, Gary's coming up. I agree that I think, going back in my mind and what I could find in history, we did want to have safe crosswalks out there. We've included, I believe, seven of them on both Route twenty-five and Route thirty-one that the Bike Commission was instrumental in helping us get that money for, which I think they need to be rewarded, and, you know, we should say that's a great thing. But when you have one that everybody agreed would be a good place to have, a crosswalk, and maybe it was supposed to be lined up, or in my mind, it was supposed to be lined up with the new sidewalk we were creating on the bike path side of Houston Street, to have the drawings that were done in two thousand and fourteen not show up in front of anybody on the City Council until the week that they were out surveying the street is wrong. I don't know who dropped the ball that's behind us, that's something else for us to discuss. But at this point, where they have located it, the way that IDOT has approved a design out there after the engineers and the designers got to it, is to me not functional. You put it right in the middle of a business owner's driveway, and just so everybody knows, I work at that business. So I see firsthand where this is at and the impact that it would have on that business. It would also directly impact the business across the street. The first thing that came out in our memo from our police chief was he felt that that was a false sense of security for an island out there that is of the size that is designed. In looking at that, you could just about get one bike across that island.
Well, that, that makes this a good opportunity to sit down and try to redesign it and make it better.
Right. And what I'm saying is, I think, is by IDOT standards, where they located it is the only place they're going to allow it.
No, I think that was us driving it. That's my understanding, after doing a little research. I don't think IDOT really directed it.
All of these that have been done out there that I could find online today is they all move them back away from the, from the center line of the intersection.
Right, let's do some investigation. Let's take a little time.
And I think that's true, but I think what we have to say is that the way that this happened and the way this one went down, it was designed, gone through IDOT's engineering, and then sprung upon us and the business community.
Did it go through, well, I don't know.
So I'm sure that it was designed for a long time before it got to us. So at this point, I have no problem with going back and looking at that, I just feel like I don't know what IDOT's going to approve for us to do there. And on top of that, we have two very much improved intersection crosswalks, three hundred feet from either side of this.
But this is the direct route to the bike path. We're trying to brand our city as a bikable city.
I understand that. And IDOT will not allow a signalized crosswalk within that location. That's why it's going to be at McKee Street. And that's why we're going to improve the north side of Houston Street to be able to get the closest path we could to the new crosswalk, the improved, safer crosswalk.
I have talked to the owner of your business, and he's not opposed to some sort of crosswalk. He was opposed to this design because of the traffic flow.
Right.
So we need to bring him to the table, show him that respect, and the other business owners, and the Bike Commission, and see what we can come up with. We can't solve it here tonight, I don't think.
Brown, you want to make?
Yeah, Your Honor, I just, I appreciate everything that everybody's saying here, and all good thoughts, and Lucy, thank you for kind of spearheading this because you're just looking out for the best interests of everybody involved. But I just, you know, I'd like to hear what Gary says as far as what's changed since the committee meeting, because, you know, I don't want anybody to be thinking that at the committee level, we, we jumped the gun and did something that we weren't thinking through thoroughly. We were told at the committee meeting that it was an either-or situation, and we had to make a decision that night. We needed to make a decision that night in order to let IDOT know what we wanted to pursue. So if something's come up in the meantime, I'm hoping Gary can explain that to us, and if that's the case, then I say, let's take it back to committee. Let's not have the debate here on the floor. Take it back to committee if we have the time. If we don't have the time, we need to vote on it tonight.
Gary?
I had sent our correspondence this weekend, kind of outlining the options that really we're at at this point in time. Option number one was basically to construct it as per the plans, that we have approved plans through IDOT, they went through design review process, got Springfield approval. So those, that's option number one, is to continue forward with the, with the plans as approved. Option number two is basically following the vote that was made at the Committee of the Whole, and that was to forego any improvements at the intersection and just basically make a change order to say we don't want to do those improvements. That would require seeking IDOT's approval. Anything that we do that we don't, I'll rephrase that, I'll use better English this time. Anything that we do that's not in accordance with the approved plans, we need to seek IDOT's approval for. IDOT could say, yes, we'll agree that you can go in a different direction, or IDOT could say, no, you need to construct it per the approved plans. I don't believe that it's, it's a large percentage of a chance, I think it's a small percentage of a chance, but IDOT might just say, okay, if you don't want to build it per the approved plans, then, you know, there's a funding issue there. But again, I don't foresee that, and I don't want to overplay that point. That's option number two, is follow the, follow the Committee of the Whole's vote, go back to IDOT and say, we don't want to make improvements at that intersection, let's do a change order, drop out those improvements, we'll finish out the project. Option number three is basically to go back to IDOT and, timing-wise, if we go back and say we want to do a change or a change in design, the rest of the project's basically done at this point. I mean, board, form boards are up, they're going to be out pouring concrete. Whether IDOT will hold open the contract to allow us to go through a redesign process, I don't know. I have to speak to IDOT on that, and I'll make a phone call to IDOT first thing tomorrow morning. That, that's, that is their, they drive that decision, not us. We're, we're basically following their process as we go through the federal funding. So they may say, fine, let's keep the contract open, we'll go through a discussion, and then that could result in a new, our new design option, or Alderman, Alderman Administrator McGrath pointed out to me today, that could be option four, and that is that we end up right back with the design we have today, but at least we'll have gone through a process to get to that point. So at this point in time, those are kind of your four options, really three options. It's, it's construct per the plans, make a determination tonight that you don't want any improvements out there, and go for a change order to eliminate those improvements, or go back to IDOT and say we want to make some sort of change, and then that'll have to be an open-ended, open-ended direction at that point as to where we, where we go with the next steps.
Brown?
That being the case, it sounds like we do have the opportunity, may have the opportunity. We may, we, if we delay the vote tonight, we might find out that IDOT says, too late, you don't get to do anything. But I guess we should probably explore the opportunities before we go any further. So I move we take it back to the committee.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Homan, that we return to committee. I would tell you, I would recommend that you do this. You all know I have connections at IDOT, and I have talked to IDOT about this, and they're willing to talk with us about it. So I'm, I'm somewhat confident that something could maybe be worked out. So they are open to the idea.
Can I ask a question? Gary, thank you for the additional information. I was curious, regardless of the plan that goes forward, whether it's a crosswalk or a median, the, the rule that has been mentioned before regarding the beacon, and that IDOT would not permit a beacon, there is, will that hold regardless? I mean, is that, is that a set policy rule on IDOT's part?
And I, again, I wasn't involved at that point in time, but I understand, we went after IDOT two, three, four times on that point, that IDOT, IDOT steadily opposed, steadfastly opposed a beacon at that intersection due to the distance between Houston Street and Wilson Street. Because you're within a close enough proximity to the, to the signalized intersection, they will not allow a beacon there.
Okay, and just from my understanding then, there will be no beacon, so regardless of what's there, whether it's a median or a striped crosswalk, it'll still be an idea of moving people across four lanes of traffic with no beacon at that location, but a beacon possible at McKee.
A beacon is already proposed at McKee, yes, and that's been approved at McKee.
I just want to make certain I understood those points. Thank you.
Further discussion? We have a motion seconded on the floor to refer it back to committee for further discussion. Kirk, call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Atech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Bodderman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Atech?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Fourteen yes, no, no's, none absent. Okay, item number fifteen is the approval of the staff positions, and you've all gotten a memo from me that outlines the names of all the department heads that have been serving us, many of them for a number of years. And as you know, we do have a requirement that they are to be appointed on a yearly basis by myself with confirmation from the City Council, so you have to vote on them every year. Do you want me to, hopefully I got the list here. Okay, thank you. All right, I'll read you the list. It is Finance Director and Budget Officer Peggy Colby, Police Chief Gary Shira, Fire Chief Randy Deike, Public Works Director Gary Home, City Engineer and Assistant Public Works Director Ratah Bari, Information Systems Director Howard Chason, Community Development Director Scott Buning, Street Superintendent Scott Haynes, Water Department Superintendent John Dillon, Wastewater Treatment Superintendent Byron Richardson, Emergency Services and Disaster Superintendent Scott Haynes, Water Department Superintendent John Dillon, Wastewater Treatment Superintendent Byron Richardson, Emergency Services and Disaster Agency Coordinator Randy, Chief Randy Deike, ESDA Manager Mark Davis, and City Attorney Kevin Drendo and firm. Anybody have any questions? If not, it entertain a motion for the confirmation.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Stark, second by Alderman McFadden. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Bodderman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATEC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Bodderman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATEC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Bodderman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Motion's approved. We'll adjourn the meeting, and I'll tell you, we're going to take about a three-minute recess because we're going to see the new aldermen and let the old one leave, and I'll go out to the audience for a minute.
Former one. I know I've aged since I've been in office, but.
You want an old one?
I need a more exciting motion to adjourn.
No, you can do that, but I'm just going to acknowledge that I don't want you to leave because we.
Come on, I'm going to the bar.
Well, no, when we start, when we start the next meeting, we're going to have a recognition of both yourself and recently retired Alderman DeSillion. We've got some plaques here for you and stuff, and so I want you to stay around.
Wait until now.
I'm just waiting. Don't be in such a big hurry. All right, you want to make the motion?
I'll make the motion. We adjourn, whatever that says, Cindy.
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 Second.
Moved by Alderman Clark, second by Alderman Brown, that the city council adjourn Cindy for the meeting of Monday, May 4th, 2015. Kirk, call the roll.
Clark?
Aye.
ATEC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Bodderman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Motion's approved. We'll adjourn the meeting, and I'll tell you, we're going to take about a three-minute recess because we're going to see the new aldermen and let the old one leave, and I'll go out to the audience for a minute.
Former one. I know I've aged since I've been in office, but.
You want an old one?
I need these. Well, that went better than I was going to. The results sheet that has to stand tomorrow morning, not tonight. Oh, yeah, it tends to go out by the morning. It's a special key.
I have the key of my heart, I'll tell you. It has to be straight, it's a metric, so that they can have a radius and still have six or eight feet of space alongside us.
Both get us all together.
It's almost that way. And you look at the paintwork up there, and that's what. You know, it's like. So that's where the. There's a median, sixty feet. We originally talked about, I thought it was going to be one of those football medians, you know, right at their, and then they would have like a little tiny eyebrow on the top. And those either had collars on it, which to me, the worry about that is you're going to get a fire truck or something, they're going over. So you can't really, you can't have any, anything on it. I think it's, to me, very. Likes us to push people. Very quickly will learn. They will hide others. I ride my bike back. I'm going to Main Street, even if I'm coming back to McKee Street, I'm going Main Street right on that hill. Right on that hill. You know, once the. They will. What's your name back? What you did? Am I in your way?
No, it's me. It went on me and Dave, too.
Come on, I don't smile very much.
Oh, you got to hold down to the flash code. There you go. Did it work?
You're going to be missed.
Ready to go. This is the first year you've been.
It was through this way. I didn't.
Thank you guys, my card. Thank you so much.
Thanks, got another one? You, how you doing? Good. Thanks. I hope your fundraiser was worthwhile. There's no. You know it. It's very cool. Good luck, too. Why isn't this called Pig in a Poke?
I can have everybody find a seat.
From all the roses, I will.
Okay, I guess before we can officially begin a new meeting, we have to swear some folks in. And so, first of all, let me just say, I'm very pleased that we have a number of our previous aldermen returning for some more intensified government and governance and justice and hopefully community enhancement. And secondly, we welcome a couple, at least one, new alderman to our midst, and it's always good to gain some new blood. And likewise, I'm very, very sorry to lose Alderman Clark. She has been a real backbone of this group for a number of years, and especially during her tenure as utilities chairman. So, as we've done in the past, we'll bring you up one at a time. I will tell you a little sidebar story here. Given what we had on the complexion of the agenda tonight, this was a hard time to predict when we were going to have this opportunity to do this. So normally, what we do is, we invite a judge from the circuit court down here to do these swearing-ins, but I made a couple of inquiries, and because I couldn't tell them that we would be able to do this before like nine o'clock, I was getting some reluctance of anybody wanting to not come down here and stand around. So the mayor can, or the city clerk can do the swearing-ins as well as the judge. So tonight, you just get the judge. I apologize, or you get, no, you don't get the judge, you get me. I apologize for that, but given, because I couldn't lock down a time, it was pretty difficult to get somebody to come on down. So, we will begin, let's do, starting with the first ward. So Alderman Fisher, if you would come up, and what we like to do is, the camera's right there, right? So maybe what I'll do is, I'll have you do it right here, and you have somebody from your, anybody from your family here?
No, they're all sick.
Okay. Raise your right hand and repeat after me, and I state your name.
Aye, Carl Fisher.
Having been elected?
Having been elected.
To the office of First Ward Alderman?
To the office of First Ward Alderman.
In the city of Batavia?
In the city of Batavia.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage?
The counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear and affirm?
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of First Ward Alderman?
Of the office of First Ward Alderman.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Second Ward Alderman Wolf?
If you would raise your right hand and repeat after me, aye, state your name?
Aye, Alan Wolf.
Having been elected?
Having been elected.
To the office of Second Ward Alderman?
To the office of Second Ward Alderman.
In the city of Batavia?
In the city of Batavia.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage?
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm?
And affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Fourth Ward Alderman?
Of the office of Fourth Ward Alderman.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, Fifth Ward Alderman. Alderman ATEC. Aye, state your name?
Aye, Lucy Deal and ATEC.
Having been elected?
Having been elected.
To the office of Fifth Ward Alderman?
To the office of Fifth Ward Alderman.
In the city of Batavia?
In the city of Batavia.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage?
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm?
And affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Fifth Ward Alderman?
Of the office of Fifth Ward Alderman.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Fifth Ward Alderman, Alderman Rusado? Family here, great?
Yes.
If you would raise your right hand and repeat after me, aye, state your name?
Aye, Michael Rusado.
Having been elected?
Having been elected.
To the office of Sixth Ward Alderman?
To the office of Sixth Ward Alderman.
In the city of Batavia?
In the city of Batavia.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage?
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm?
And affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Second Ward Alderman?
Of the office of Second Ward Alderman.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Third Ward.
If you would raise your right hand and repeat after me, aye, state your name?
Aye, Dan Chantet.
Having been elected?
Having been elected.
To the office of Third Ward Alderman?
To the office of Third Ward Alderman.
In the city of Batavia?
In the city of Batavia.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage?
The counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm?
And affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Seventh Ward Alderman?
Of the office of Seventh Ward Alderman.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Alderman Stark? Fourth Ward. Okay, if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me, aye, state your name?
Aye, Susan Stark.
Having been elected?
Having been elected.
To the office of Fourth Ward Alderman?
To the office of Fourth Ward Alderman.
In the city of Batavia?
In the city of Batavia.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage?
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm?
And affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Fourth Ward Alderman?
Of the office of Fourth Ward Alderman.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, Fifth Ward Alderman. Alderman ATEC. Aye, state your name?
Aye, Lucy Deal and ATEC.
Having been elected?
Having been elected.
To the office of Fifth Ward Alderman?
To the office of Fifth Ward Alderman.
In the city of Batavia?
In the city of Batavia.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage?
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm?
And affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Fifth Ward Alderman?
Of the office of Fifth Ward Alderman.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Fifth Ward Alderman, Alderman Rusado?
Yes.
Family here, great?
Yes.
If you would raise your right hand and repeat after me, aye, state your name?
Aye, Michael Rusado.
Having been elected?
Having been elected.
To the office of Sixth Ward Alderman?
To the office of Sixth Ward Alderman.
In the city of Batavia?
In the city of Batavia.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage?
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm?
And affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Sixth Ward Alderman?
Of the office of Sixth Ward Alderman.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Seventh Ward Alderman, Alderman Brown? If you would raise your right hand and repeat after me, aye, state your name?
Aye, David Brown.
Having been elected?
Having been elected.
To the office of Seventh Ward Alderman?
To the office of Seventh Ward Alderman.
In the city of Batavia?
In the city of Batavia.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage?
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm?
And affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Seventh Ward Alderman? Of the office of seventh ward alderman?
Of the office of seventh ward alderman.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. All right, I guess I need to call this meeting to order. Brown?
Here.
Rusado?
Here.
Atack?
Here.
Stark?
Here.
Chanzen?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Fisher?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Homan?
Here.
Sam?
Here.
Bodderman?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
McFadden?
Here.
Okay, let the record reflect that all 14 elected members of the city council are present and accounted for. And the next item of business we show on our agenda is a recognition of a couple of recently departed aldermen. And first I'd like to start with Steve Vasiliyan. Steve, if you would come forward.
She was here with me when I was sworn in, so I want her here on the way out.
Absolutely, that's fine. As all of us know, because of increasing growth in his personal business, Steve was forced to make a decision, and he unfortunately had to make the decision that he had to leave the city council. And his departure was met with great reservation and regret by many of us on the city council, because Steve brought some enviable talents to the job. He was very far sighted thinking, and he brought a lot of in-depth analysis to what he was doing. And his talents in the building trades, I think certainly could and was and will be of great benefit to the community of Batavia. And so while he was only here two years, I would like to present to you the following plaque, which reads from the city of Batavia, "Steve Vasiliyan, in appreciation of two years of dedicated voluntary service to the citizens of Batavia, Illinois, as a member of the city council from 2013 to 2015. Thank you for your contributions to the quality of life in our community, and signed by myself as the mayor." Steve, thank you from the bottom of our hearts.
I just want to say that it was an honor and a privilege to serve with you for the betterment of our community. So I thank you fellow aldermen, I thank you Mr. Mayor, and I thank you city staff.
Okay, and now if Lisa Clark would please come forward. Well, this has been a long run. And Lisa tells the story that she and I are neighbors, as most of you know. She and I was what, five houses?
Around the bend.
To the east of me. And she came down one time with her daughter to sell me Girl Scout cookies. And she came on, I got on my doorstep, and I knew that I was going to maybe have an alderman leaving. And so I didn't know who we were going to get, or what, who was going to do what, but it was kind of a tense situation, and we needed to find somebody. So as she's telling me the Girl Scout cookies, I figured, well, she's getting something from me, I'm going to ask her for something from her. So I said, hey, just keep your ears and eyes open, there may be something, opportunities for you to serve in the city of Batavia. Didn't even tell her what it was.
No, you said, would you want to be on a citizens committee? I was like, yeah, sure, whatever.
Go ahead, tell them.
I said, no, you're kidding, right? You weren't kidding.
So anyway, we got an opening for sixth ward alderman, and she and several others applied?
There's three of us.
Three of us applied. And so we went through the annual, the way we do it where all the council helps to vote, and Alderman Clark was the one selected. And so she has been here ever since. And as you were elected three times to this, you got appointed for two years?
Appointed and twice elected.
In 2001. And then you served 14 years, so you were elected three times. And then she was appointed by the council for the first two years. So during her run, she ended up having a big interest in utilities. And first you start out with water, and that ended up being, but then she got into--
But we fixed the water.
Yeah, we fixed the water, absolutely. And we got it all, we had a high radium account. And she was, got on here, and she told me when she first came that that was a key focus of hers, and she wanted to make sure that that water got fixed. And it was a multimillion dollar experience for the citizens of Batavia and the ratepayers, but we did fix it, and I'm glad we did, because now we have some of the strongest drinking water in the region. And it was a great improvement for our water utility. And then after we got done with the water, we really got knee deep into the whole electrical thing. And so she's had her taste of government at the, from the very bottom to the very top, and knows everything that can go right and can go wrong. And so she is one of those tried and tested veterans who's really been here through some thick and thin, but she has always been an ardent supporter of a quality of life for this community. And she and I didn't always agree on what she was supporting, but that's fine. That's what everybody's here to be, an independent mind and voice, and she truly was that. And so she was one that I always knew was never shy of an opinion, was always ready to say it and share it and work for it. But at the end of the day, I will say this, that Lisa Clark was always here to work for the very, very best interests of what she thought was the right way for Batavia to go. So I think that the citizens of Batavia owe you a deep gratitude for all you've done to kind of steer the ship in getting us over a lot of difficult situations in a time of unprecedented growth there in the early 2000s, and then the slowdown with the recession. We've seen the ups and the downs, and you've been there as a partner with us. And so I know a lot of us regret that you made the decision not to run again, but we wish you the best in the future.
Thank you.
So I have this plaque to present to you from the city of Batavia. It says, "Lisa Clark, in appreciation of 14 years of dedicated voluntary service to the citizens of Batavia as a member of the city council from 2001 to 2015. Thank you for your contributions to the quality of life in our community, signed by myself as mayor."
Thank you. This is the only plaque I've ever earned, I'm so excited. Thank you, everybody.
I'll miss you all.
We'll miss you.
Okay, we've got through that. Administrator's report, Mr. Murgrath.
Thanks, Mayor. I want to remind everybody that this Wednesday is Bike to School Day. We'd like to have as much participation by the city council as we can, in addition to any citizens who are interested. If you would like to participate, you should meet at the middle school this Wednesday at 7:30, and at any elementary school at 8:30. Chief Dyke is volunteered to lead a group from the East Fire Station to the middle school, if they'd like to meet at the East Fire Station at 7:15 and go together. Also this Saturday, the Bike Commission is going to have a bike rodeo at Hooverwood School from noon to 4:00 PM. A bike rodeo promotes bicycle safety, and it includes bicycle safety inspections. The bike rodeo is kind of funded by a grant that was obtained through the activism of our Bike Commission, and we appreciate their, the passion that they have for this, as well as other things relating to the bicycles in Batavia. We're in the midst of interviewing, our first round of interviewing, Human Resource Director candidates, and I'd like to discuss tomorrow night at the COW, a potential evening for the city council or the committee of the whole to meet the finalists. We're going to do some test holes, some test digging at the Baptist Church. Is it Tuesday, I think, Wednesday? We've done some soil borings to try and get an idea of what we have under the ground. And the results, surprise, surprise, there is some rock there. And to really get a better idea of what we have, so we can talk with developers, it's been recommended to us that we bring in a backhoe and just dig some holes here and there. So if you're interested, you can go out there on Wednesday. When that's done, we have notified our permities, our downtown residents. It'll all be barricaded off. When we're done, we'll fill it with gravel immediately so it can be used. And then either as part of the street program, or earlier, we will patch all of that and get the reports, or get the report to you at committee. Brush pickup is starting. The first pickup on the east side is May 11th. The west side is May 18th. They will then continue every month through October, and weather permitting, the week of November 30th. If you want the exact dates, please go to the city website. We did receive the final plans for Houston Street last Friday. I think Gary's sent out some partial plans, partial pieces of that plan. And he is planning a meeting with the, next Tuesday, to work out some of the details with the engineers and our partners at the Park District. And lastly, the staff also wants to thank, to certainly thank Lisa and Steve for giving their time to the community. If you recall, Lisa's also been very active with the triathlon and the fireworks, and it's just a really nice things. So, and on behalf of the staff, we wanted to thank you both. There's, you know, we've been here a long time, witnessed your, you know, the support, especially Lisa's. She's been here such a long time, the support for the staff, whether or not she's been in agreement with us or not. And we welcome Mike, and look forward to working with you. And I'd advise you to get your tour of the treatment plant before it gets much warmer. There's some technical aspects to that. And lastly, I don't know whether maybe one of the aldermen wants to talk a little more about this, but we did have the Metro West annual drive down to Springfield last week. We were the, we had the largest contingent of any city in Metro West, and that fact was remarked upon by many of the legislators that we met with. I think it was the sign of the times that everybody down there is very concerned that we actually were meeting with Senate President Cullerton, Minority Leader Reggano, House Republican Leader Jim Durkin, Majority Leader Barbara Lynn Curry, and many others. So it was a very successful trip, and it was good to see that. It really shows that the city being leaders, not even, not just within the city, but outside the city with our other municipal partners. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Any questions, the city administrator?
Just one quick one. I need further developments on this door hinge?
You know, I'm just waiting for a final review of the, actually the pictures, or the design, the banner that goes across. The mayor made some changes, so, but I haven't talked to them for a while. Send you a memo.
I mean, we'll be done with this, the summer, I'm hoping, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, thank you. Okay, going to six committee reports. Before we get into that, some of you may have gotten it. I sent out a memo to everybody this afternoon about the committee system as it currently sits with the city council. And what I asked in the memo, just so you know, is, number one, now that we've gone to the joint committee, the whole committee, I'm just curious to know, there's really no need that we form a particular committee for, because you're all here voting on everything. So, you know, we can do it any way you want to do it, but it's just a question I'd like to have you ask. Because the way we set this up is each ward has at least one representative on every committee. And that means that each alderman is a member of two committees, and there are seven members of each committee. And so generally, the two aldermen from each ward get together, and they decide what committees they would like to have of the four, and they divide it up. And that's how we've always appointed, at least in the last few years that I've been around here, that we've done this, so that you get aldermen where they want to be and where their interests are. But now the way we run this is that because we have the twos unite meeting, everybody sits at what is the committee meeting. The next thing, though, is we need to have, I think, my opinion, somebody who kind of is the spokesman for the four committees. And traditionally, you know, that's always, we've had a thing where traditionally it's always gone to the seniority of who has served on the city council the longest. And so what I did this afternoon is, is that I sent you all a memo in which I researched the date of when at least 12 or 11 of you got on the city council, the three new people. You're so far down the pack that you're not in the fray here. But the rest of you, at least, starting with Alderman Brown, who came on in 1997, he's the veteran amongst the aldermen here at the moment. And so then we go into whoever else is there. And so you can see who is in line to be the four committee chairman, if it was. So I thought what I would do is send that out to you, and then maybe tomorrow night, or next Tuesday night, we can have a little conversation about it. It's no big thing, I don't think. I think the committee system, the joint committee thing is working pretty well. Everybody's informed about everything that's happening, and nobody can say, well, I didn't know about this one, because it's not my committee. You're sitting there at all the, and what I would like to do, though, is have one member, and maybe a vice chairman of each committee, so that the senior staff, when they have a project that they want to bring up, they can maybe brief you ahead of time. And then when we get to the J-COW, the senior alderman or the committee chairman can lead that discussion and talk about what it is that they want to talk about, and we can make decisions. That, just kind of, there's some continuity to that to keep it going. But I'll let you make all those decisions, but I sent you all the information about who are the top four, and who is in the next tier, who potentially could be vice chairman, et cetera, et cetera. And all the dates of when you were sworn into the city council is included in the agenda, or in the memo. You should have it on your computer, or if you don't already. I left, I had them leave, I'm going to be four or five, and Jeanette was just in the processes of kind of cleaning it up and getting ready to send it out. Did you get it? You got it? Okay. So tomorrow night or next week, we can talk about it, you can talk about it amongst yourselves. So I just wanted to let that one go. So I think just for the grins of it for tonight, I'll call upon those who have been doing this to this point in time, in case, Alderman, do you have anything under community development?
I do not. Nothing under community development, but we do have a committee of a whole meeting tomorrow night at 7:30.
City Services, Alderman Wolf, do you have anything?
Yes, tomorrow night we have a resolution designating Alternative E as a preferred alternate for the reconstruction of Main Street. And then also there is a meeting, I think it's tomorrow night, 5:00 PM here on the Main Street. Am I right, Bill? Was that tonight? Tomorrow night, the early meeting, for a public meeting. And while I have the floor, real quick, I also wanted, as we're watching people leave tonight, over in the closet over there is John Benditz, who has been there for many years. Last year as a volunteer, not as a paid employee of VATV, and I believe this is his last evening doing city council meetings. So I want to give John a round of thanks for all his time back there. And I'm sure he'll still volunteer, we'll still get him talked into coming out to football games, or maybe fill in down here every once in a while. Thanks for all your time, John.
How many meetings is it, John?
200, closer to minus five.
Think about how many you've been to.
Alderman Stark, do you have anything under government services?
I do not.
And we don't have anybody running public utilities at the moment, but that'll change very quickly.
There is a discussion tomorrow night for property acquisition for wastewater treatment facility.
All right, that being said.
Your Honor, I probably also need to announce that Plan Commission is canceled, I think, for this coming Wednesday. It was scheduled for 7:30, but it has been canceled. And then Historic Preservation is scheduled for Monday at 5:30, Monday, the 11th.
All right, and we have any other business from the council? Alderman Stark?
As everyone knows, it's almost 4th of July. It doesn't seem like it to the average person, but for us, it's coming like a freight train. So to recap, the garage sale weekend, we had a very successful weekend. We had beautiful weather for once. We had a total of 181 registered sellers on the garage sale, and, which brought in about $6,000 in registration fees. That does not, we hit some mailing expenses, we had some advertising costs. But, so it's a good fundraiser for us, and we really appreciate the community participation, so we didn't have to send out the garage sale police to try to track down those who failed to register. We also continue to look for volunteers to help with the 4th of July. It's a big project. Every year we raise a lot of money, between $30,000 and $40,000. And I can't stress enough that the money comes from ordinary citizens, businesses in town, people who just really want to have a good 4th of July celebration for the city of Batavia, as well as all the surrounding communities that come to us. So, that said, again, we're always looking for volunteers. Marty Callahan, Alderman Callahan and I are both on the committee. We're dragging Alderman Clark back in, now that she has nothing to do. And the mayor sits on our committee. We're a great group, there's about eight to 10 active members, and anyone is absolutely invited to join. So, but thank you for your participation in the garage sale, and also thank you for the donations. We received just over $500 in donations when we walked in the Loyalty Day Parade.
Do you want to talk about June 14th?
I do. On June 14th, the Batavia Access Fireworks Committee will be scooping ice cream at the Peg Bon Center. I have the permit for us to be able to be out there, and we'll be selling ice cream scoops. And if you're good, we'll put some sprinkles on it. The community band will be playing. The mayor will speak a little bit about Flag Day, because we're kicking off a year-long celebration of Flag Day, since it, the originator of Flag Day is from right here in Batavia. So we're going to be working hard, we're going to need a lot of volunteers to get the excitement going for Flag Day, and I hope that we'll get even more people to participate.
Yesterday, as those of you who were at the Loyalty Day Parade, or saw us in the Loyalty Day Parade, we proudly carried an American flag from Redant Road down to the VFW, to the appreciation and the cheers of many. And that is one of several flags that we have engaged to buy. And this June 14th thing is somewhat significant to Batavia, because 100 years ago, or 99 years ago, it was officially proclaimed on June 14th, 1916, by President Woodrow Wilson, was the very first official American Flag Day. The day it was approved, the gentleman who had led the national campaign to have June 14th as Flag Day, and supposedly June 14th, I guess is when Betsy Ross got the first flag done and gave it to George Washington, when that all occurred, 100, or 99 years ago, the gentleman who was heading the campaign lived on South Batavia Avenue, right down about across the street from where Monticello crosses Batavia Avenue, just north of the Lincoln Inn Restaurant. And his name was Dr. Bernard J. Sagrand. He was a dentist, who had started out as a schoolteacher up in Wabaka, Wisconsin, with this idea. And if you read his history, he really did have, he wrote books, and he made all kinds of speeches, and he was quite a character, but he got this National Flag Day kicked off while he was a resident of Batavia. Now, in 1930, he moved to Aurora, but he was here in '16 when Woodrow Wilson did it. So as far as I'm concerned, Batavia's going to claim hold to the honor that we were the hometown of the gentleman who got American Flag Day first proclaimed, and he lived here when that happened. And he had children in our schools and everything else at that point. And he had children in our schools and everything else at that point in time. So, we're going to make something of that. And so, on June 14th, the Access Committee, with fireworks committee's help, is going to have this ice cream social at the Peg Bon Center, and we're going to have some, the community band is going to play, and there's going to be some other musical entertainment, and there's some other entertainment coming. I guess it's going to be a three or four hour thing by the time it's done. And we're going to get the ice cream from down here at the corner, and the Batavia Fire Department's going to bring down their little crossroads vehicle to move the ice cream from down there up to the ice cream social, because they're pretty heavy to move those things back and forth. And so, we've got a lot of fun type things planned for that day, but one of the things we're going to do is the flag that you carried yesterday in the Loyalty Day Parade is going to be hung off the side of the building here. And we're going to order an even bigger flag than the one we carried yesterday, and we're going to hang that off the front of the building. So we're going to kind of, hopefully, as the year progresses, maybe we'll add to the number of flags. Till next year, when we get to the 100th anniversary, we'll have the city hall building kind of surrounded and hanging in flags on the outside of the building. I think it'll be a memorable photograph and a nice memory for a whole bunch of younger kids in this town, that, you know, the 100th anniversary was really held here. I've already had some calls from some of the news media outside of the area about it, you know, that they've heard that we're getting ready to do this. So I think we'll get some significant, very positive spin coverage for Batavia, because we're doing this. So, I'm excited about it, and we've gotten some support from the chamber and Main Street, and others seem to be interested in the idea. So, we're optimistic that this could be kind of a very memorable commemorative occasion of some excitement, and some, hopefully, create some really nice memories for people in our town in the days ahead. And at the end of the day, I guess what I'd like to do, someplace in the downtown area, is create some type of a permanent, I don't call it memorial, but some type of a permanent stand that will recognize the fact that American Flag Day began here in 1916. And we'll have that as part of a downtown historical experience, because we are loaded with history in this town, if you put it all together. We've got some fascinating stories involving very prominent Americans who have been in Batavia over the years. So, we're going to try to bring all this out, and this Flag Day thing just seems like a real ripe opportunity to do it. We may have to share it with Aurora in some form or fashion, but we had them here living in Batavia when it happened. That's all I can tell you.
I'm working on my Betsy Ross costume for ice cream scooping, so.
Also, on the fireworks committee, I wanted to publicly thank Gene Olmstead. We drew, or he drew, the winner for a large screen TV, which he donated to anybody who took place in the garage sale, and that's going to be announced on BATV possibly tomorrow. The winner has been contacted, and they will be announcing it on BATV.
All right, anything else from anybody? Anybody in the audience wish to address the council? All right, going to the mayor's report, I've already talked about the Flag Day ceremony. One thing I would like to tell you, I had three pictures I was going to show tonight, and then I had to leave. I was in Chicago all day with the RTA chairman, and I got back late, and I was writing that memo that you got, and I was trying to get some pictures copied, and I guess I got them copied, but I had to leave before I got them done, or I got it back, so I didn't have the little thing to put into the computer. But I wanted to show you just three pictures of a very bad fire that we had in town a week ago, Saturday night, out at Party Light on Kingsland Drive. And it ended up being, I guess, in excess of a million dollar loss to the building. And it was, as all of you know, I've had a pretty strong interest in the fire department all my life, and I've never quite honestly seen a fire quite like this one that we had there, because we had a tremendous amount of fire, but the photos I can show you show the outside of the building, and it looks like everything's totally normal. And then I've got another picture that I took from standing in the front door, looking in, to what is their, kind of their office and their cafeteria, and the room is as clear as this room is right now. And then way off in the distance, I have a picture of the Batavia Fire Department about to enter some swinging doors in the building, and go into a room that the smoke was so intense that it was down almost to the floor level. And when the guys went in the door, you totally lost sight of them. They had a vat of perfume on fire in there that was really burning quite seriously, to the degree that it melted steel studs in the roof, and just colored the roof, and weakened it so that they're going to have to put a new roof, I guess, on part of the building. And so, as a result of it, it was quite a dangerous and damaging fire. But what was unique about it was the smoke wouldn't leave the building. And I've been to a lot of fires, and I've never seen one that the smoke didn't want to come out. Now, there was probably some technical things that they were doing in that factory, that they had controlled their ventilation system to a degree that you couldn't get the smoke out. So at the end of the day, the Batavia Fire Department, while we had some extra help, and we had 12, I believe it was 12 fire departments in here with us fighting this thing, because they kept having to switch crews in and out, given all this smoke in this one part of the building that we couldn't get out. So we finally called the mutual aid box alarm system network that's in the state of Illinois, and asked them to dispatch to us a very large smoke ejector truck. And these are almost a story and a half tall. So as far as I know, there are three of them available. There's one in Lyons, there's one in Wheeling, and there's one in Rockford. So the state looked around and tried to find the nearest one, and I guess that would have been in Lyons, but the truck was out of service that night. It had some mechanical things, I guess, going. So they ended up sending us the truck from Wheeling. Now, the station it was at was way over on the east side of Wheeling on Milwaukee Avenue, so they had to come all the way down Lake Cook Road, and get on 355 at the very end of it, come all the way down 355 to 88, and then come out 88 to Farnsworth, and then come north up Kirk Road into Batavia and into our industrial, thank goodness for GPS. But they got there about an hour in response, red lights and siren coming from Wheeling, and they turned this, got the doors open, and we turned this big smoke ejector on. And it was about 20 minutes, we had the smoke out of that building. But we needed a vehicle like that to be able to do this job. And I guess, I just wanted to publicly commend the Batavia Fire Department, and our ES people, and the Batavia Police Department, because we ended up getting public works, water and electric, and all kinds of people involved in this thing. And everybody truly rose to the occasion. It made me very proud to be the mayor of this town, when you saw how good all of our departments worked together, and how at the end of the night, when it was all over with, we had a lot of loss in this one part of this building, but as most of you know, we've been working with Party Light, because they're moving a big addition into Batavia at the moment, and we were able to stop the fire and probably prevent the building from any damage to the degree that they're not able, they're continuing to be able to operate in it, and are repairing the damage. So, you know, cheers to the Batavia Fire Department for an extraordinary job of firefighting, and a big thanks to all these neighboring departments that came rolling in here and helped us out, moving crews and hoses and everything back and in. But we really did shine that night, and a very positive note, I just wanted to publicly thank the Batavia Fire Department for what I thought was an exceptionally great job. It came, the alarm came in just as the Batavia Police and Batavia Fire Department were playing a benefit basketball game out at Batavia High School against the schoolteachers for benefit Kane County Casa. And I think you had the game, what, about half over? And we got their call, so I think most of the firemen, almost every one of them left, and the police had to pick up and run with the game then, I think, wasn't it?
That is the reason why we lost.
So, we ended up, you know, doing a great job, and I just wanted to commend the Fire Department for an extraordinarily great job. So, thank you very much. Alderman Brown, I entertain a motion for adjournment.
Where have we adjourned the city council meeting?
Second. Move by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman O'Brien.